Ms. Jessie.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the closed session agenda as recommended.
Thank you. Second?
Mr. Chairman, I second.
Ms. Ralston, thank you. Discussion. Those in voting is... I almost did it. Online voting is open.
The vote is five yes, three absent, Deutsch, Wilk, and Williams. Motion passed.
And the motion enter closed session. Ms. Jessie.
Mr. Chairman, I move that pursuant to the Virginia Code 2.2-3711, the Prince William County School Board enter closed session for the following reasons. One, to discuss the appointment and releases of specific employees under Virginia Codes 2.2-3711A1 and 8. Two, to discuss and take action on student disciplinary matters related to the reassignment appeal and a long-term suspension appeal of specific students under Virginia Codes 2.2-3711A2 and 8. Three, to discuss the performance and legal protocols for the school board parliamentarian under Virginia Codes 2.2-3711A1 and 8. And two, four, to discuss the role and appointment of specific students as student representatives, as student representative and alternate representative to the school board under Codes 2.2-3711A1 and 8.
Thank you, Ms. Jessie. Do we have a second? Ms. Ralston.
I second.
Thank you. Online voting is open.
The vote is five yes, three absent, Deutsch, Wilk, and Williams. Motion passed.
The Prince William County School Board will now enter into closed session and will return at 7:00 PM. Board is returning from closed session to open session. We're on item 7.01. I'll make the motion that the Prince William County School Board accept the recommendation of staff for one student representative and two alternates on the school board. Is there a second?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Williams.
I'd like to second.
Thank you. Online, you want to speak? Ms. Williams.
I just wanted to say thank you to the board, and I think this is an awesome opportunity for us, and it should be a learning experience for all of us.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Anyone else? Ms. Jessie, you have your mic on. I'm sorry, did you? Nope? Okay.
The vote is six yes, one abstained, Deutsch, one absent, Wilk. Motion passed.
Moving on to item 8.01, approval of the closed session consent agenda. A motion is in order.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Jessie.
I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the closed session consent agenda as recommended.
Thank you, Ms. Jessie. Is there a second?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Williams.
I'd like to second.
Thank you. Discussion.
The vote is seven yes, one absent, Wilk. Motion passed.
And closed session certification. A motion, please.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Jessie.
I move that pursuant to Virginia Code 2.2-3712, the closed session agenda, the closed session of the Prince William County School Board meeting of November 14, 2017, be certified by adopting the following resolution. Now therefore, it be resolved that the Prince William County School Board hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge. One, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification resolution applies. And two, only such public meeting business matter as were identified in the motion convened in the closed meeting were heard and discussed for consideration by the board.
Thank you, Ms. Jessie. Is there a second?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Ralston.
I second.
Thank you. Discussion. Voting is closed.
Vote is seven yes, one absent, Wilk.
I declare that the public hearing is now open on the subject... if I click on the right thing on my computer, we can do this the right way. There we go. I declare that the public hearing is now open on the subject of the sale of excess school board property and retention of proceeds received from the sale of approximately 4.46 acres of land, a portion of 8225 Linton Hall Road. Any citizen who has signed up to speak on this matter may do so at this time. There being no citizens that have signed up to speak at this public hearing, I declare the public hearing closed. We have a brief pause, just a few seconds before we begin the public meeting. I'd like to call the Prince William County School Board meeting to order. We will start today's meeting with the invocation by Associate Pastor Keith Seymour of the McLean Bible Church, Prince William, at the request of Ms. Allison Satterwhite of the Gainesville District. Mr. Seymour, Pastor Seymour, excuse me.
Thank you. Let's pray. God, we just praise you, Lord, for who you are and all that you've done. God, that you are the Creator and sustainer of life, and God, we want to come to you and request, Lord, wisdom and guidance during this meeting. Lord, and remind it of just how you view children. Lord, while you're on this earth through your Son, Jesus Christ, we know that he welcomed them, and even said that if we have childlike faith, we can enter heaven. So, God, we want to acknowledge, Lord, that you love children, Father, and that we do as well, God, that we want to make decisions that would ultimately better them. And, God, in a society today, Father, and in a nation, Lord, where there's so much evil and hatred and division among us, God, we want to look to you, Father, in your word, and how you summed up all the laws and the commandments by two simple commands, loving God and loving others. So, God, as we attempt to do that, Lord, we pray that we would love you through obeying your word and loving others as we'd want to be loved ourselves. So, God, please guide us and direct us through your wisdom, and we pray these things in the powerful name of Jesus. Amen.
I'll usually ask if there's any students in the crowd today, but since I can see you and you can't hide, any students that I can see can step up forward and lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please. Come on up. Yeah, there's a lot of you. Come on up. Or you can just stand. I guess there's so many of you this time. Why don't you just stand this time, and you guys can lead us in the pledge of allegiance. We are on to the approval of the public meeting agenda. A motion is in order. Ms. Jessie.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the public meeting agenda as recommended.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Williams.
I second.
Thank you. Discussion.
The vote is seven yes, one absent, Wilk. Motion passed.
On to adoption of the consent agenda. A motion is in order. Ms. Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Sorry. Got ahead of myself.
I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the public meeting consent agenda as recommended.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Is there a second?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Ralston.
I second.
Thank you.
Vote is seven yes, one absent, Wilk. Motion passed.
Moving on to citizens' comment time. It looks like we had five people sign up in advance, two people sign up at the door. We should be able to get through everybody right here. I'm going to call everybody's name, so this is the order coming up. You've got Mallory Murray, and you can start working your way... excuse me, you can start working your way towards the front if you'd like. Mallory Murray, Ricky Morales, Regina Leggett, Chrissy Fowles, Jennifer Gilly, Riley O'Casey, and Bill P. Track. That is the order of our seven speakers. Before we get going today, I'll remind everybody of protocol. Everyone will have three minutes to speak, of which I'll keep the time here on my computer, and you'll be able to see it on the screen over my right shoulder. At 30 seconds, it'll turn yellow. That means it's time to wrap it up. At zero seconds, it'll turn red. That means your time has expired. I ask everyone to follow proper decorum at all times, otherwise you'll be asked to step aside. Our first speaker is Mallory Murray.
Good evening, Chairman Sawyers, Vice Chair Jessie, and School Board members, and Dr. Waltz. I am Mallory Murray, Substance Abuse Prevention Specialist in the Office of Student Services, and my information is on file with the Clerk of the School Board. First, I would like to thank you for joining us in celebrating Red Ribbon Week. We celebrate it in our schools, superintendent's breakfast, KLC, and in the community. I hope you caught the posts, tweets, and snaps that filled our feeds that week. There was plenty of creativity shown through door decorating contests, guest speakers, morning announcements, drug-free pledges, themed spirit weeks, and the Red Ribbon Week art contest, which is why I'm here today. I would like to recognize all of the winners of the art contest for their hard work and creative expression of this year's theme, "Your Future is Key, So Stay Drug-Free." At this time, I would like to ask for elementary first-place winners to stand next to me as I call your names. Brooke Bazan, first grade, Signal Hill Elementary School. Anna Clara Martin, second grade, Signal Hill Elementary School. Lily Balduco, third grade, Antietam Elementary School. Sabrina Castellano, fourth grade, Potomac View Elementary School. And Eunice Chau, fifth grade, Yorkshire Elementary School. At this time, would all parents, principals, and teachers please stand to be recognized? Thank you all for sharing your creative artwork with us. Artwork will be displayed in the KLC atrium. We ask that students and their parents join us in the atrium to recognize each student individually and present them with an award. Thank you.
I'm sorry, kids, don't sit down. At the request of Ms. Williams, she'd like to take a photograph with the board and you guys, so please come up right up here, and we'll come around, please. All right, our next speaker is Ricky Morales. Ricky?
Good evening, Chairman Sawyers, Vice Chair Jessie, School Board members, and Dr. Waltz. My name is Ricky Morales, and I'm an HTHY Students' Lead Team member from Brentwood District High School. My information is on file with the Clerk of the School Board. As you may recall, I came before you several weeks ago to outline the Red Ribbon Week plan and provide you each with a red ribbon to wear. Tonight, I am back to first recognize those middle school first-place art contestants, winners, and then to debrief you on the Red Ribbon Week activities that took place in our high schools. At this time, I would like all of our middle school artists, first-place winners for grades six, seven, and eight, to please come forward and be recognized. Tasneem Alam from Bevel Middle School was chosen as the first-place winner for sixth Representing the seventh grade is our first-place winner from Potomac Middle School, Madison And the eighth-grade first-place winner is Sanai Williams, who is from Bevel Middle Congratulations to all Red Ribbon Week artists. Please stand and be recognized. Oh, no, that's it. We're doing... Healthy communities, healthy youth lead team members coordinated Red Ribbon Week efforts through high schools and the school division. Prince William County High School students participated in Red Ribbon Week themed spirit days, signed pledges, received resource cards, and red ribbons. New Directions Kindness Club hosted a luncheon for students, and the students created posters. Daily announcements and a designated Wear Red Day, along with posters, and a college campus visit for Some Freedom students highlighted the theme "Your Future is Key, So Stay Drug-Free." The HTHY Students' Lead Team members expressed that high school students proudly wore their ribbons and signed the pledges. Their hope is that next year, they will be able to have more than... they allotted 200 given to each school. And in some schools, back-to-back spirit weeks for homecoming and Red Ribbon Week did not deter students and staff participation. Those of you with Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, Snapchat, and other social media sites probably saw numerous other Red Ribbon Week activities in the Prince William County schools and communities on your feed. HTHY Students' Lead Team and the Office of Student Services would like to thank you... thank all those both in the school division and community who participated, and a special thanks to those at the Kelly Leadership Center who dressed in red to get rid of drugs and joined together to team up against drugs. Remember, students, staff, and community members, your future is key, so stay drug-free.
to eventually close that partition to break this down into one smaller room. So if you can move forward here, there's plenty of chairs up front for everyone who's staying. If you can, please move forward. We're not going to like close you in three seconds or anything. You don't have to run, but it is going to happen, so. All right, our next speaker for citizens' time is Regina Leggett. Regina?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the Board. My name is Regina Leggett. I'm a teacher with Prince William County Schools, and my name and address is on file with Prince William County School Clerk. I've always believed that if I worked hard and did my part to prove myself a dependable asset to any company, that I may not get the promotion, accolades, and recognition for doing so, but I would certainly avoid the elements of disciplinary action. It is not until I began my career as an educator that I realized this was an ill-conceived, if-then fallacy created to marginalize and devalue dedicated employees. The teaching profession is under constant scrutiny. As a teacher with Prince William County Schools, I am constantly the subject of professional training that is designed to promote cultural understanding, tolerance, acceptance, and awareness, often because of the words and actions of others. The primary goal of these trainings is to help teachers become respectful of the multitudes of cultures and people that they'll interact with while in the educational setting. These trainings were designed to promote cultural awareness and to protect cultural differences. This is not to say that there was nothing learned or gained from these trainings. However, there is a gap that often goes unexamined, and that is the ethical, cultural, and instructional leadership of our principals. Mr. Superintendent and Assistant Superintendent, make no mistake in what I'm about to say. Some of the principals that have been elected to preside over our schools, teachers, students, and communities are some of the biggest undercover culturally biased bullies we have yet to identify and conquer. Bad principals tend to teach good lessons, but they do so at the detriment of a school's culture. I stand here today with a personal testimony that my own cultural and ethical differences have not been well-received, understood, accepted, or tolerated. My question today is what resources can be offered to the teacher that has no freedom to be her creative self, or to the teacher that is not allowed to exercise his professional judgment, or for the teacher whose administrator simply doesn't get it? It is impossible to conduct any type of leadership without a relationship. Just as teachers are expected to connect with their students, principals should make a conscious effort to connect with their teachers. The principal contributes consciously and unconsciously to a school's processes and cultures. Therefore, successful relationships should be set as the foundation for successful principalships and jobs.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Chrissy Fowles. Chrissy? Chrissy? Okay. Our next speaker is Jennifer Gilly.
Good evening. My name is Jennifer Gilly. My address is on file. Thank you for your time and consideration. I was at the board meeting in June, but so were a lot of other people, and my name was called to talk after I was already home in bed. I'm a parent of four children at Prince William County Schools. My oldest two are at Woodbridge Senior High School. They had a great year last year, great staff, administration, teachers. Both of them made the honor roll, both are on the football team, and both are very active in the community. My problem, as you may know, is with the building and the facilities. We have an old school that worked for the students back in the '70s. It has been updated, some in the past 40 years, but not nearly as up to date as it should be to give my children the world-class education. As Mr. Byrne pointed out in June, many of the people that were there came for the one issue of inequity, and that was good, but he encouraged us to come for more meetings and get more involved. I was at many of these meetings last year. Did I tell you I have football players? I am in charge of the concession stand this year, so I've not been able to make it to these meetings until right now. I also heard about all the wonderful programs at many of our schools in Prince William County. Ms. Jessie and Ms. Satterwhite pointed out that it just goes to show that the building doesn't make the school. That is so very true, because despite the issues with Woodbridge Senior High School, the programs have flourished. Our drama program performed in May, right here for you, even though the CFPA program is no longer there. And again, I am a football parent. My boys are, right now, this minute, practicing at Potomac High School for the second round of the regional playoffs that they are in. We haven't done that since 2009. We don't have the facilities at Woodbridge for them to be able to use. The restrooms on the football field have never been updated. There is no light going into the men's room... sorry. Which is a huge safety hazard, and I'm having a hard time accepting the trough in the men's room, where I go to football games at every other high school and see the new facilities and the number of toilets in the women's restroom. I cannot imagine that the men's restrooms have troughs at those schools. Mr. Wilk, Chairman Sawyer, we absolutely need equity in our schools, like you pointed out on June 21st. What one side of the county receives, the other side of the county should as well. Like you said, a world-class education should be for everyone, not just the children of the parents who are loudest on the west end of the county. Those parents got together years ago and organized and became one voice. We are learning from their accomplishments and getting louder each meeting. My youngest will graduate in 2027. Two meetings a month, 10 times a year, 10 years? That's a lot of board meetings I can attend, don't you think? Please consider the students at Woodbridge High School as you discuss the capital improvement budget. There are many people talking about equality in our schools for different reasons. I want equal resources that other high schools in our county have. If we're going to talk about all the rights of the students in Prince William County, we need to recognize that students at Woodbridge are just as important as the students at Battlefield and Patriot and Colgan and everywhere else. Didn't you say in June, Ms. Williams, that you like "and" not "or"?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We are on to the sign-ups at the door. Riley O'Casey.
Good evening, Board members. Dr. Waltz, my name is Riley O'Casey, and my address is on file. This week, November 13th through the 17th, we celebrate American Education Week. In 1921, the National Education Association called for the designation of one week each year to spotlight education. In its resolution, the NEA called for an educational week observed in all communities annually for the purpose of informing the public of the accomplishments and needs of the public schools and to secure the cooperation and support of the public in meeting those needs. While our educators, as well as public education, should be acknowledged more frequently than one week a year, the Prince William Education Association would like to thank all of our educators in the school division. Your dedication, commitment, and continued efforts to ensure our students succeed will never go unnoticed. At the November 1st School Board meeting, I stated, "The world of education for our teachers and support staff is not what it used to be. We used to be about the whole child. Now, we seem to focus less on the child and more on a score. Our children are not scores. Our teachers and administrators are not scores." So despite the pressures from the federal and state levels, we must always remember that we are educating children, not filling in bubbles on a multiple-choice test. Part of the work in cultivating the success of our students is our education support professionals, or ESPs. Part of the work in cultivating the success of our students is our education support professionals, or ESPs. Without our ESPs, this division would not function. They are the bus drivers, the secretaries, custodians, maintenance staff, security specialists, cafeteria staff, technology specialists, and instructional assistants. Every ESP contributes to the success of our students. Tomorrow, Wednesday, November 15th, is ESP Day. PWEA is challenging all employees to wear red, and I see some are wearing red. I got excited and thought it was maybe you knew and you were wearing red early, but wear it tomorrow, to show support for our ESPs. I am extending that challenge to our school board and superintendent staff. Show your support for our ESPs by wearing red. Take an individual or a group photo and post it on the PWEA social media pages. I'm calling on our school board and school division and our community to honor the work our ESPs do every day for our students. Thank you.
Thank you. And our final speaker is Mr. Petrick. Mr. Petrick?
Good evening. I'm here, Bill Petrick, Woodbridge. I'm here tonight to talk about the level of politics on the school board once again. Mr. Sawyers, you have brought a level of politics to this school board that has never been seen before. I was at the board meeting two weeks ago, and I asked the question, "Where is Mr. Sawyers?" You have missed four out of the five prior to tonight of the school board meetings, and I read a newspaper article where you said that some of the reasons why you weren't here was because your attorneys, or attorney, told you not to come. So for those of you who are watching in the audience, on television, and here in the room, Mr. Sawyers is involved in four lawsuits. He's suing Ms. McGowan, the division consul. He's suing Mr. Walts, the superintendent. He's suing a principal of one of the high schools, and he's being sued. We're paying for attorneys for Mr. Walts, Ms. McGowan, and for Mr. Sawyers and another board member as they defend themselves in a civil lawsuit. He's running for Congress. He threw his name in the hat about six months after he was here on the school board. Our children are suffering. You hear parents coming up here on a regular basis, pleading with you to do things about the school system, but you can't do it if you're not here. There's a group of parents that got together a year ago, and they are trying to recall Mr. Sawyers, once again for those of you in the audience. The website is www recalledsawyers.com. They have, and they just announced the other day after the election day, over 6,000 signatures to bring Mr. Sawyers to court. I would ask parents to get involved. Google Ryan Sawyer's Prince William School Board Problems, or something like that, and you will see a plethora of articles that come up online of where he has done things that are bad for education. Please go to www recalledsawyers.com. There's a link to the Facebook page there. And on that Facebook page, you will learn many, many things about Mr. Sawyers that will not make you happy as a parent. If you want the education for your child that you think they deserve top-notch, you need to get involved, and you need to find out what's going on in your school board. So, Mr. Sawyers, we asked that you step down from the chairmanship now, before it gets to court, and that way you can spend all your time working on your partisan campaign for Congress. www recalledsawyers.com. Thank you very much. If anybody would like to sign the petition, I do have it here.
Thank you. Let's see, we're moving right along to item 16.01, the Aquatics Center Water Safety School. Ms. Goss, this is all you.
So, good evening, Chairman Sawyer, school board members, and Dr. Walts. Tonight, we have the distinct honor and pleasure to share with you about our Aquatics Center's Water Safety School and its impact on our students and their ability to stay safe in and around water. Having personally observed our Water Safety School, I'm hopeful that you will share in our great pride for the important work that is being done for our second-grade students here in Prince William County. At this time, I would invite Alan Dunn, our aquatics manager, to come to the podium.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Walts. Thank you for having me here this evening. As Mrs. Goss said, my name's Alan Dunn. I'm the aquatics manager for the Prince William County Schools Aquatics Center. Tonight, I'm here to talk to you about an epidemic that the children of our nation are facing, and that's drowning. Drowning is the second-leading cause of death for children under the age of 14. Lack of access to pools and swimming lessons is one of the leading reasons that these children will never learn how to swim. As you can see on there, a child in a household with a parent that does not know how to swim only has a 13% chance of learning how to swim themselves. Fortunately, we have a solution to this problem, and we call it the Water Safety School. Our goal with this program is to provide second-grade students in Prince William County Schools with opportunities to receive instruction in swimming and water safety. We do this through two different programs. One is a five-day program. Students come to the Aquatics Center once a week for 45 minutes over a five-week period. On day one, they receive a pre-assessment from one of our instructors in the water. Takes about 30 seconds, and basically they're just showing the instructor what they can do. Can they blow bubbles? Can they float? Are they able to perform complete strokes in the water? Then the instructor's going to place them in a station with other students that have a similar ability level in the water. So for the rest of that day, they're going to receive instruction in swimming. And then also on days two and three, they're going to receive swimming instruction. On day four, they're going to receive instruction in water safety. On day five, we do some more instruction with them, and then we break them out into one of three stations. First station's water basketball, Marco polo, and then every child gets the opportunity to go down our water slide. So we also have a one-day program that we developed. For this program, the students come out for an hour and a half. They spend 30 minutes receiving swimming instruction, 30 minutes water safety instruction, and then 30 minutes going through the stations that I just talked about. You're probably asking yourself, "What's the difference between swimming instruction and water safety instruction?" And that's an excellent question. When we talk about swimming instruction, we're talking about what you think of as swim lessons. We use the American Red Cross Learn to Swim curriculum for our program. It's one of the most widely recognized in the aquatics industry. It's used by thousands of facilities throughout the country. Level one, children are learning how to blow bubbles, float on their front and back. Level three, children are learning how to use rotary breathing, which is breathing to the side. They're learning how to do dives from the side of the pool. When we're talking about water safety instruction, we're teaching children how to properly wear life jackets, when they should use life jackets, what to do if they fall in the water, if their friend falls in the water, when it's okay to be in the water, near the water. Should always be an adult present. So we realized that we might not be able to teach a child how to swim in five days, but if we take a child from day one who's afraid of the water and give them the tools that they need by day five to float on their back, that could save a child's life one day. So between those two programs, for the five-day program, we had nine schools participate for the 2016-2017 school year. And basically, we found some principals who might be interested in participating in a pilot program with us. And then towards the end of the year, we had a tremendous amount of interest, and we created the one-day program. So what we're doing this year is we invited the original nine schools back to participate with us again this year in what is now a five-day program. Last year, it was a six-day program. And then we opened another nine slots, and we selected those schools through a random lottery process. So we'll have 18 schools doing the five-day program this year. Last year, we did 21 schools in the one-day program. And that was, we selected those schools on a first-come, first-served basis, based on the slots. So here I have for you kind of the numbers of the programs last year and what we anticipate for this year. So as I mentioned, we had 30 schools last year between the two programs, and just under 3,100 students. And keep in mind, all of those students received at least an hour and a half in the water with us. This year, we expanded the five-day program to 18 schools, about 2,000 students. We're hoping to capture another 20 schools and 2,000 students through the one-day program. So that would give us an increase of 1,000 students coming through that program this year. So we're very proud of this program. We would love to expand it to as many students as possible. We found last year that approximately 20% to 30% of the students had either never taken formal swim lessons or never been in a pool before. We found that a lot of those students are coming back to do swim lessons with us in our community swim lesson program at our facility. We've also had parents that have come back and signed up because they recognize the value of the program that their students are receiving, and they want to learn how to swim or improve their swimming abilities. Feedback from students, parents, and teachers has been tremendous. Teachers are telling us this is the best field trip they've ever brought their students on. The students come back to school more focused, ready to learn. They're learning, or they're building friendships outside of their normal social groups. Obviously, they're building confidence, and they're getting in a lot of good physical activity. So the Water Safety School is actually just one of the numerous programs that we offer at our facility. We're also open to the public seven days a week. We have daily admission fees, 20 swim passes, one six- and 12-month memberships. We have a wide array of swim lessons that we offer to the community from child and parent all the way up to teen and adult. We also offer water aerobics classes and glide fit classes. We have swim teams that practice at our facility seven days a week, including 10 of the 12 high school swim teams that practice with us. We're also doing 25 high school swim meets this year, including two conference meets and three region meets. We're also doing two USA Swimming meets this year. The first one was last weekend. We're also doing one in January. We're doing a zone meet for a local synchronized swim team in March. And we'll also have the regional sea perch competition coming back to our facility in March as well. So we're doing a lot of great stuff at the Aquatics Center. So thank you for having me out tonight to talk about the Water Safety School.
Thank you. Very good presentation. Is there more? I'm sorry, is there more? Ms. Goss, you look like you were ready to jump up on that microphone. It looked like, I thought you had something. I didn't want to cut you off. I just had a few questions, if you don't mind. And I know when we talk about the pool, let's keep it related to the presentation. Don't get too distracted down the pool conversation. No, joking aside. When you say schools, a couple slides ago, you were mentioning schools. Miss Williams has it up. When you say up to 20 schools, is that you're talking elementary schools in particular?
Yes, sir. So with this program, it's just second-grade students.
Okay, so we're talking about the 55 or 60 elementary schools that we have. Got it?
Yes, sir.
And is there any, and I don't mean you should be there now, but is there any... Because the Water Safety Program obviously is, you know, an amazing thing, right? Is there any hope in the future that we can even get to kids with the Water Safety Program before they get to us? So before they're in kindergarten, before they're in our preschool programs, you know? Because we want them to get to us, right? And not being that statistic that you started your presentation with. So is there any hopes in the long run that we can, or are you already doing that? Maybe I missed something. I apologize, but, you know? With parents, because I mean, obviously, I mean, obviously, some kids have access to great facilities and pools in their communities, and can get to them no problem, and others don't. And so I guess that's what I'm wondering, is there anything in the long run, looking at that? One, two, five years down the road?
Right. So unfortunately, in terms of this program, you know, we're just about, this year will be just about maxed out with what we are able to offer through this program. But, you know, we do lots of special activities at the facility. We had one just a few weeks ago called Pumpkin Pluckin'. We have families come out. It's basically a floating pumpkin patch. So families can bring, you know, their kids, and they all get in the pool together and do that kind of stuff. As I mentioned, we also offer a wide array of Red Cross swim lessons that we offer to the public, starting at child parents. So you can have a child that's six months old that starts in that swim lesson. So that's something that we recommend to a lot of folks to get started early, because really, you know, the earlier, the better. But, you know, as I mentioned, within the scope of this program, we're pretty much maxed out with what we can offer during the school day.
That's awesome. I guess one quick follow-up is how are we getting the word out about these programs? Like the pumpkin thing you just mentioned, I mean, how do we get the word out about those events?
So mainly through social media. You know, we post flyers at our facility, but Facebook and Twitter, we post it on our website. On the last day of the Water Safety School, we send the kids home with flyers about our programs, our hours, our fees, and special events like that, so they can take it home. You know, their parents are seeing the flyers and stuff like that.
And those are county-wide or just to the, I mean, county-wide elementary schools? You do that with the flyers?
Yes, sir. So when they finish the Water Safety School with us on their last day, we send them home with a bag with some information about our programs and stuff.
Perfect. Thank you very much. Ms. Williams?
I think that what we've started is absolutely fantastic. I'm very excited about the pool and our children being exposed to water safety and swimming. My question or concern is for, I know that it's lottery-based, and I know there's a large swaths of our county, especially in my district, where the children have no access to pool, period. So I'm wondering if there's any consideration being given or priority for children who we know there are no pools in their neighborhoods or anywhere around them. They, you know, if there is a community pool like close to me, if you're not there at 10 o'clock, you're not getting in the pool. So the majority of the kids don't swim. So my concern is, as we're going through this, are we able to make sure that those children who we know for a fact are nowhere near a pool or any body of water, that they can safely go in, or their parents probably don't swim? What are we doing to ensure that they're getting some sort of priority to making sure that they're at least learning water safety? I'm more concerned about the safety. Swimming is great. I think all kids should swim. But I'm really concerned, because especially like where I'm at in the northern end, we're literally right by a large body of water. So I'm just, you know, I know fair is fair lottery, but at the same time, I'm concerned for kids who have zero access.
So that's an excellent question, and I'm really glad that you asked that, so I kind of address it. The lottery system is just to fill out the five-day program with those additional nine slots, and that's what we did this year, because we thought, hey, this is the fairest method that we can come up with. Because we had a lot of interest after last year. A lot of principals were reaching out to us saying, "Hey, we heard about this. We really want to participate." And that was one of the reasons that we developed the one-day program last year, was so we could meet that demand. You know, and there are a lot of schools that are either too far away, or they weren't selected for the lottery, that come out for that one-day program. So they're still getting the exposure to the program, and it might be difficult for some schools to commit. Maybe their teams can't figure out the scheduling, that they can come five weeks in a row, but they can figure out one day for an hour and a half. So the kids are still coming out and getting 30 minutes of those swim lessons, 30 minutes of water safety instruction, and they're still getting the 30 minutes of, "Hey, let's go down the water slide. Let's play some basketball."
Okay, thank you. And just a general comment, I love that facility. It's magic. My kid, who wouldn't go near water, went there and was like full-speed ahead. So I don't know what special powers you have over there, because that's what it is to me. But I think it's great. I think the facility is great. I've heard wonderful things from, especially the parents at Kilby who I know went. So I just, kudos to you, and you guys are off to a fantastic start, and thank you for answering my question.
Thank you, Ms. Williams.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Ms. Ralston?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Hi, good evening. And you're talking one of my favorite subjects, swimming.
Yes, ma'am.
Where are your lifeguards? Who are they certified by?
American Red Cross.
Red Cross, okay. And what's your youngest that you like to put in the pool? What's the youngest child that you like to put in the swimming pool?
I'm not sure. You mean, like in a swim lesson?
Yeah, it could be a swim lesson. It could be just sitting on water with the parent.
So we have a program called Tiny Bubbles Tot Swim that we run on Fridays. It's a special event that we do, kind of for kids that aren't at school age yet. So if you pay an adult admission, which is $6, you can bring in two kids under five for free. So we've had a lot of parents that come in with their younger kids, obviously not of school age, but, you know, some are children under the year of, under one year. You know, as I mentioned, our community swim lessons start at six months. So, you know, we don't really have a minimum age that they have to be before they get in the pool, as long as, you know, they're wearing appropriate swim attire to make sure that nothing gets in the water. I'll leave it at that.
They do have that with them.
Yes, ma'am.
Another question. Your, let's see, the students that, maybe I need to get somebody here. How are the students picked, or is it just any school signs up for your programs?
So that's a good question, because that's something I didn't address. We invite the entire grade level, second grade from the school, to participate in the program. Some other, it's a zero-cost program to the schools and the students. We absorb the cost of the buses, obviously, the lifeguards and the instructors. We also had 650 swimsuits donated by a national swim shop to provide to students that aren't able to afford one otherwise. So we don't want there to be any barrier to entry for any student from participating in this course.
So, excuse me, so the bus will go wherever the kids are and pick them up? Is this what you're telling me?
For the Water Safety School.
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am. It goes to their school and picks them up. It's a field trip for them, essentially.
Okay. I also sit on another board, the Boys and Girls Club. And they called over the summer, and they did not get the right response. So now I know, so when they say they're going to go swimming again, I will know to tell them, "Just go ahead. The bus will pick you up." It's our, that's what she just said? Oh, just for second grade?
Yes, ma'am. I'm sorry. So for the Water Safety School, we absorb the cost of the buses. We schedule the buses for the schools, for the buses to go pick the kids up at the school and bring them- go pick the kids up at the school and bring them to the Aquatic Center and, and back and forth. But, that's just for the, just for the Water Safety School that we were talking about tonight.
So, only, only second graders are in water safety?
Yes, ma'am.
Is there a reason for that? That's, it's just the second grade?
So, we, we selected second grade because kind of developmentally, it's a, it's a, it's a sweet spot for us to get the kids, because once, once they pass a certain age, it's, it's a little more difficult to, to, to start obtaining those skills, because the older you get, the harder it is to learn how to swim. So, second grade is kind of a sweet spot, and that's why we picked it. You know, due to the limitations that we have in terms of time and space, you know, we're only able to offer the program to, to one grade at this time.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I believe that means he said he needed a second pool, but I'm not sure, because of space. Mr. Trenum, that was a joke. Got a smile out of you. Ms. Jessie, then Mr. Trenum.
Is it, is it AJ or Ms. Dunn?
Yes, ma'am.
You, you look like a teenager, so.
[laughing]
I, I remember going over for the under-
Sea perch.
The robotics under, and they introduced me to you. And I was just stunned that, I know you're much older, but such a young person could come in and organize a program of that magnitude. The day I was there, there were at least 100 volunteers, and I think it's on the direction of Sparks, who organizes that program.
Sea perch.
Sea perch. It's a sea perch program. I, I was just totally impressed, because it, that pool has become a community activity. And our kids hang out at malls, and to see something like this in our county is really phenomenal. I, I just want to make a shout out to a person that's not here, and that's Betty Covington, because Betty was one of the advocates. And she, well, she and I both took a little bit of harassment about this pool. And when we talked about, a little bit, a wee bit, but when, the, the whole concept of kids who are so fearful of water, because they come from parents like me who has a fear of water, that when we presented that as something that would complement this program, never did I imagine that this number of students would, you would meet the needs of this number of students in this short period of time, because Colgan just opened. And yet, all of these kids have benefited from this program. So, I just, I honestly don't have a lot of questions from, for you. I just want you to see more kids, if that's possible. But, I realize that there's only one facility. But, I just think it's just a wonderful, wonderful program. And I want to thank you for coming to Prince William. I think you left Arlington?
Yes, ma'am.
Arlington's loss and our gain. I just think you're doing a phenomenal job. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Ms. Jessie. Mr. Trenum?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for the presentation. I really appreciate it. I do have a couple of questions. On the slide where it says Water Safety and More, we talk about a water aerobics class and glide fit board classes. Are those targeted towards adults or towards students and?
Those are 16 and over classes. The glide, a glide, I'm not sure if you're familiar with glide fit boards. They're basically inflatable paddle boards that we put in the water and tether together. And you kind of do some high-intensity training that you would do on land. It's just a little more challenging in the water, because you don't have the, the balance aspect, so it works your core a little bit more. But, because of kind of the, the nature of those classes, we have to keep them 16 and over.
Okay. So, that's more of a community use target audience?
Yes, sir.
Okay. One of the things that we talked about when the, the whole pool thing came down was use the ability to serve our special education community. How are we doing, how are we doing as far as that, that is concerned? And also, what costs are we, are we, are we passing any of the costs along to our special education students? Are we covering those costs?
Sure. That's a, that's a great question. We're, we're doing a couple of different things. One of the things, since we're talking about Water Safety School tonight, you know, we have a lot of students that, that participating in a, in a group setting already, that we have come with the rest of their class, and they're in there with, with the students, no issues. We've had some students come through that needed a little more individual instruction. We've been able to accommodate that, you know, on a pretty wide basis. We also have a special event that we do once a month for children with autism specifically. There's a, a group called Poak Nova that does an after-hours rental with us on Saturdays. They rent out the leisure pool, which is the warm pool with the water slide, and, and a couple of lanes in the, in the competition pool, and they have their run of the facility. We're also doing, well, there's a, there's a, a club at Colgan High School called Finn Friends. I believe they, they partner Colgan students with some of the Independent Hill students in that club, and they come over about once a month to the pool to kind of do a, a special event with us. We also do lots of private lessons. We've had a lot of children with special needs come do private lessons with us, you know, as part of our community swim lesson program. Last year, we had a special education class, I believe, from Hilton in Osborne Park, come with us. The one group just wanted to, to come and spend an hour and a half in the pool. The other group, we actually did some instruction with them, some swim instruction, water safety, and some, some free time, as I mentioned. So, for those, those two, we, we, there, there is a, a minor cost that we do, just to cover our staffing costs. We're certainly not making money off of those. But, you know, if we have to bring in instructors or extra lifeguards, for, for those types of field trips, we charge half the daily admission rate, which would be $2 per student, if they're just coming in to, to swim with no instruction. So, there would be a, a minor cost involved with that type of, type of program.
Thank you, Mr. Trenum. Anyone else? Mr. Deutsch.
Just want to say thank you for all you're doing, and we should never doubt what young people can do.
Thank you, Mr. Deutsch.
Ms. Satterwhite.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Okay, looking at the by-the-numbers schedule, this year, with 18 schools in the five-day program, up to 20 schools in the one-day program, what does a typical week look like? How many, how much do you fit into a week in programming?
So, a lot goes into scheduling the schools. Obviously, we have to coordinate with them and make sure that they're able to make it work. We also have holidays to, to deal with. We have Thanksgiving coming up next week, so that's a consideration. But typically, between three and four days a week, we have schools coming for Water Safety School. It's usually Monday through Thursday. Right now, or I think we have a session starting after Thanksgiving. It's going to be Monday through Wednesday. Some schools, we have to split up over two days, because they have too many students. We only allow 40 students to come at a time, because we want to keep the instructor-to-student ratio low in the pool, about one to six. So, if they have a large second, second grade class, we have to split them up over two days. So, that's another scheduling consideration. For the, for the one-day programs, you know, that kind of comes at the end of the school year, wherever we can fit them in. We have a little more flexibility with that, since they're just coming for one day and not five weeks. We don't, we don't have to schedule them the same day over multiple weeks, so it's a little bit easier to schedule them.
Thank you. Just wanted to get an idea of what that looked like. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Satterwhite. And Ms. Williams?
Just one more kudos from some swim people and swim team families. I know they appreciate the extra space, the extra lanes, the extra place to have competitions and meets. So, I just wanted to make sure that I said that before I go home and get accosted by the swim families. I know they're still getting up at like 3:00 something in the morning, and we've just helped them a little bit. But, I, I understand that they enjoy the facility, and they're very appreciative of having an extra place to have practice and have meets. So, I just wanted to say that.
Thank you.
Mr. Trenum?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I actually do have a follow-up question. And Rita, this actually may be more for you. But, so, back to the special education piece. Have we looked at our special education department, looked at how they can incorporate the facility into our special education instructional program and, and, and better leverage that for our special education students?
So, I know that last year, we did some, some work to reach out to make sure that our teachers were aware of the program and its availability. And certainly, there's much support, Mr. Trenum, in order to have those students with disabilities come to the facility and utilize it. It's not a part of our instructional curriculum, but I believe our teachers know that the facility is there, and we certainly are willing to support any class who wants to make it a part of the instructional program, that they would utilize that on a field trip or a more regular basis.
Okay. Thank you. Also, just, I'll just give you a heads up. Come budget season, I want to discuss, see if we can offset those costs for our special education students. If the curriculum is an education piece at that point.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good. Ms. Dunn, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Item 1701, we are on superintendent's time. Dr. Walts?
Thank you, Chairman Sawyer, members of the board. First, I'd like to, to say thank you and congratulations to all of our educational employees during American Education Week. Victory Elementary School has been newly recognized by the Virginia Board of Education for academic progress. Victory received the Distinguished Achievement Award in the Virginia Index of Performance Incentive Program. Here's some really great news. Fred Lynn Middle School has been re-designated as Partially Accredited Reconstituted. Its accreditation status has been on hold since the Virginia Department of Education announced other schools' status in September. Fred Lynn's new partial accreditation reflects the ongoing work of teachers, staff, administration, and community members that have been highlighted at school board meetings over the past several months. Prince William County Public Schools was honored for energy savings with first place in the academic category of the Virginia Energy Efficiency Leadership Awards. Since 2012, efforts led by our energy management team have helped the division avoid more than $25 million in utility expenses through efficiency improvements and by creating a culture of conservation among staff and students. That means money can go to education instead of energy. Congratulations to our energy team led by Administrative Coordinator Brian Gorham and Facility Services Director John Windley, and to the school's offices and people who helped generate the savings. Patriot Teacher Jared Hasselbauer has earned recognition as a master teacher for the Project Lead the Way Engineering Program. Reagan Middle School Athletics Coordinator Jonathan Buckva has met the rigorous criteria of the National Interscholastic Athletic Administrators Association. He is now a Certified Athletic Administrator. I remind everyone that there will be one additional school board meeting in November, on Wednesday, November 29th, and there is only one meeting in December on the 13th. These dates show in our online calendars. I mention this because they differ from what is printed in the Elementary and Middle School Guide and Calendar, because that publication went to press before the change from the usual first and third Wednesday schedule had been finalized. Congratulations to the newly elected members of our state legislative delegation. I very much want to thank the departing incumbents for their dedicated service. We will be meeting with both incumbents and newly elected legislators at the division's legislative breakfast on Monday, November 20th. And in conclusion, I'd like to wish everyone a very happy and safe Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Walts. I don't normally add on to that, but I just want to remind the public that we shifted last year like we did this year. We shifted up, there was two meetings in December, because last year was literally as late as it possibly could be, which was the 21st, and this year was the 20th. Being so close to the holiday season, we shifted the, those two board meetings up, which, which does put three in November and one in December. It's the same number of meetings, in case anybody's wondering. They've just been shifted a little bit upwards because of the holiday season and vacations and those things of the board. So, I just wanted to remind everybody why we did that, and that we're not actually shorting a meeting. It's just being up, moved up a little bit. We are on to the VSB-A Academy Awards. I don't think I have Sean Spicer on a portable podium to come out like they did on the last award show. So, it's not going to be, not going to be nearly as entertaining. I just moved my script here. I apologize. School board members devote many, many hours to serving our children and accomplishing all that, all that they need to do as policymakers and funding authority for our school division. All board members, superintendents, clerks, and deputy clerks are automatically enrolled in the Virginia School Boards Association School Board Academy and earn certification points for participation in professional development. Tonight, on behalf of the Virginia School Boards Association, I am pleased to announce awards earned by our school board members through the VSB-A Academy. The level of recognition is based on the point values earned. Ms. Lily Jessie, Ms. Diane Ralston, Ms. Allison Satterwhite, Ms. Lori Williams, and Superintendent Dr. Stephen Walts have earned an acad, excuse me, have earned an Award of Excellence and a Silver Pin. Ms. Jessie, will you please come forward? But, I will read what is on her certificate and then present similar certificates to the other board members who have also earned awards. Ms. Jessie's certificate reads, and all the certificates read, "This award is presented to Lily Jessie for your commitment to effective school board governance through your participation in the VSB-A School Board Academy 2015 through 2017." Dr. Walts, will you join us, please?
Sure.
And Ms. Ralston, please join us. Yeah. We can go over to Ms. Satterwhite. Yeah, Ms. Satterwhite, we'll, we'll come to you. You good?
I'm good.
I'm injured, Diane. I'm sorry.
Excited.
You've never earned the same levels everyone at the same time before.
You can't hear her. Hold it lower. And Dr. Walts, don't go anywhere.
Right here.
Dr. Walts, right here. There you are.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Jessie?
I would like for the chairman to please, along with Dr. Walts, present a certificate. On behalf of the Virginia School Boards Association, I'm pleased to present you with this Award of Recognition for your participation in professional development. On behalf of Prince William County School Division, I thank you for your dedicated service to our county and commitments to providing a world-class education for all children in Prince William County.
Congratulations to all of you, and thank you for your dedicated service to our Prince William County community. And we are on to board matters. Ms. Satterwhite, I'll start with you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, as everybody probably knows by now, my activities have been a little bit limited the past few weeks of, as I've recovered from foot surgery. At least tonight, I didn't wheel in on the little scooter. So, I haven't been able to do everything that I've been invited to do, but I'm getting there. I do want to congratulate our Mountain View Elementary School students who were here tonight, who were part of the art contest winners, and I'm very happy to see them tonight. And congratulations to all of the winners who are here and that we took pictures with tonight. Their artwork was beautiful. And thank you for the participation in Red Ribbon, Red Ribbon Week. I was able to attend the Battlefield High School and Patriot High School football game that closed out the regular season. I want to congratulate Patriot High School for a hard-fought victory that evening and for winning the Cedar Run District Championship. Yes, Mr. Trenum, that was hard for me to say. This past week, I was able to attend three Veterans Day celebrations at Cedar Point Elementary School, Sudley Elementary School, and Victory Elementary School. As a wife, daughter, sister, aunt, and mother-in-law of veterans, it means so much to me that so many of our schools recognize and take the time to honor our military members for their service. It was also a pleasure to meet the family members of two of our principals who were able to join us for these celebrations. To all of our students and staff members who plan these events around the county, I thank you. And to all of our veterans who are part of our PWCS family, thank you for your sacrifices and for serving our country. You have our gratitude. And once again, welcome back, Mr. Trenum. I want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. And before I finish, the last school board meeting, all of our Prince William County school principals were invited by certain school board members to attend Part II of the Strategic Plan Presentation. I feel that our principals deserve- I feel that our principals deserve an apology. What they received that evening was 30 minutes of professional development training that is not the job of this board to directly provide. The role of providing professional development falls under the supervision of the superintendent. This board was to prepare questions concerning the strategic plan for that meeting. The role of the school board member is not to invite principals to our meeting and then basically give them a lecture and a tongue-lashing. What occurred was unprofessional, in my opinion. I appreciate the endless hours of work that our principals put into their jobs. Many are in their buildings from sunrise to past sunset. They sacrifice family time for their school family. They work hard for our students because they want the same thing that we want, and that's student success. A great deal of damage was done last meeting to the morale of our professional staff countywide. In my opinion and leadership, we need to be encouraging and building up our leaders, not tearing them down. If we want all of our students to reach high levels of achievement, then we need to make sure that our staff members have not only the knowledge, but also the confidence to make that a reality. I hope that as a group, we'll continue to praise our students to success, but also each and every one of our staff members. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Satterwhite. Mr. Trenum.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will be quick. First off, I want to say thank you to Cedar Point Elementary School and Victory Elementary School for their wonderful Veterans Day celebrations. It's especially heartwarming and makes you feel really appreciated to be there, not only as a school board member, but as a veteran. So that just, it made it all the more special. And I want to give a special shout-out to the Marsteller Men's Choir for their performance. They did, once again, an outstanding job. Mr. Kiersted just keep doing great things every year, so I appreciate that. On the topic of Marsteller, last night, I was able to attend the eighth-grade women's ensemble at Stonewall Jackson High School. And Ms. Phelan, you are, once again, producing outstanding results with your young ladies. They did just a wonderful job. And before I forget, I was also able to visit with the Piney Branch Advisory Council and just discuss school-related issues. It's always good to visit with our schools and the advisory councils as I'm getting back and getting to the swing of things. It helps me get my head wrapped around all the issues that are going on and get back into the groove just in time for budget season. So looking forward to that. So that's all I have for this evening, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Trenum. Ms. Ralston.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to thank, talking about principals, I'd like to thank my principals and teachers who came out on Election Day to talk with parents. I went to each one of my schools that day. It was raining a little bit, and that was my first thought. I didn't want to get wet. So that's okay, I went anyway. The interesting thing, though, was that I asked the parents before they went inside. I said, "Are you okay here at this school?" I said, "I hear that things aren't going so well." And they look at me like, "Lady, are you crazy? They're wonderful." And so I said, "Well, I was just asking." That's what you want to hear, that it's okay, that it's good, and that their child is learning. So I think I'm going to try to keep that one up some because it starts very early in the morning when the parents show up throughout the whole entire day. So basically, she's, no, there she sits, okay. And I thank you so much with your nice smile that my schools, in my personal opinion, are doing better than they were when I came. And it's not because of me, but maybe it's the attitude in this school division that has changed and said that we can do it no matter where your school is located. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Ralston. Ms. Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have to laugh. Gil, you are probably, as I just said, the only person alive who'd get me excited about budget season. Your excitement is contagious. Picking off of another comment, I wasn't going to say anything, but I actually kind of thought the opposite of having the principals here. At our last meeting, I thought it was nice that we could all come together and be on the same page at the same time. There was both positive and negative comments made as regards to our school's achievement gap and performance. And I thought it was nice to know that, you know, we had senior staff here who are the leaders, just as we are elected leaders, and we were all here at the same time, hearing the same information and didn't have to be concerned about translation or if a principal was able to receive the information or whatnot. It's all, not always going to be positive, but I definitely didn't feel like it was tongue-lashing. But that's also my opinion too, and this is one of the great things about sitting up here is that that word "and," everyone has a different perspective. So I just wanted to share mine on that. Moving on from that, I wanted to thank Mary Williams Elementary School for their Veterans Day Ball. I got to take my favorite veteran, which is my dad, who I never really get to spend a lot of time with. And he does not come to a lot of school events, his grandpa. And he was very impressed and thought that it was wonderful. There were so many families who did come. The children looked spectacular, and I just wanted to thank all the staff who was there to serve. Also, on Election Day, a group of people who don't get a lot of attention is all of the people who ensure the safety of everyone coming into the schools, our janitorial staff. They're there, they keep the schools clean, neat, lights on, come and clean up after everyone that has come through for the day. And I just wanted to make sure that I said I appreciate that because I do greatly. I think that we don't always remember to say thank you to them, and they make our jobs possible. In addition to that, I just want to close out by saying something. Freedom High School, Freedom High School, Freedom High School, Freedom High School. And I'm saying that because I can't tell you how many texts I got, because we all know by now, hopefully, that I'm not a sports person. But not only did they play my heart, Woodbridge, because I'm alumni, and I have to say, got crushed. But I was receiving, one thing I've never said, I've never really picked on newspapers before because it's not my purview, but I was actually getting texts from other parents there, like, "Why is the paper not talking up Freedom?" Because they talk about Woodbridge and they lost. And I said, "I don't know, I'm at home, I have no clue." So I just wanted to make sure, since our papers didn't say it, and I haven't heard a lot of noise and chatter this year about Freedom's exceptionally awesome football record, and I don't even care about football, I think it's 10-0. So, don't care about football? Freedom, you go. Because A.J. Felton, hands down. I just want to make sure that I give them their props. If nobody else is giving them their props, and I take a little bit of time to give them their props, because we have other incidents at Freedom, it is everywhere. And when they are doing fabulous, like they are right now, go Freedom Football. They should get their props too, because I'm not an athlete, I cannot run. I can only imagine how hard it is to come in the summer, in the heat, and to be a cohesive team like they are and gone through everything that they have from having incidences towards their coach, people doubt them, people talk smack about them, which, yes, it happens. I just want to say, from a non-sports-loving person who is surrounded by athletes and sport-loving people, and to make sure that I pay attention to my school, and so they get the props that they deserve, go Freedom High School Football Team. And in addition to that, thank you to the special education students who are feeding everyone during those home games because y'all are amazing, and I will never stop giving you your props for that. Have to be a client, just every time I go. Thank you to Josie, one of the administrators, who helps out with the special education team, special education students who run that bus. She does not get her props either, and I was so politely, I'll put it to you that way, reminded about Ms. Josie. She's a friend of my son's family. And once again, go Freedom High School. I appreciate all your hard work and effort, and I'm just going to say it one more time, go Freedom. So thank you, that's all I have tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. And Mr. Deutsch.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Following up on that note, I wanted to congratulate Hilton on winning the first state cheerleading competition and their first win since 1998. So a very impressive win. And then also, I was at Hilton's football game a couple of weeks ago, and they made the playoffs. I had a very, very strong win to finish out the season, and congratulations there as well.
Thank you, Mr. Deutsch, and Ms. Jessie.
Well, first, I wanted to, and I'm not sure if I mentioned this the last time, the naming of the maintenance building for Randy Dasher. And I've known Mr. Dasher for many, many years because my school went under several renovations, and such a professional staff. They just said to me, "Don't worry," and I just want Mr. Klein to know that you've got a very professional staff. And Randy Dasher, to me, is the best of the best. So I was just happy to play any small part in the naming of that building. The naming of the other buildings have not gone as well as we would like, but wasn't it nice to just have a building name and nobody fought about it? Because it was just something that came to me as, sometimes you have people behind the scenes. And my reputation has always been to be a voice for the voiceless, and I was able to play a part in that. I want to talk about the Mary Williams. Shirley Bunch organized this, along with the principal and staff, but I think Mr. Johnson knows Mrs. Bunch. Mrs. Bunch was one of those people that I ran into at Vaughn who took 10 years as an aide to get a bachelor's degree, 10 years. And now she has a master's, and I encouraged her to get a degree. But once she got her master's, she said to me, "Well, thanks for the encouragement, but I think I'm going to pass you because I'm going to work on my doctorate." So I think we have all of these aides in Prince William County and some systematic way of providing an education for them to become teachers in this county. During the political campaign, there was one thing that Mr. Gillespie said that I agree with. There's no career ladder for teachers, and I'm hoping that down the road, we will do that. Went to a homecoming game, I was in the homecoming parade with too much candy, it's in my house right now. But the homecoming parade, and went to a homecoming game. I had never been to a homecoming game at Woodbridge High School. And I need to apologize, my husband and I need to apologize to Woodbridge High School because we left before the game was over. We sort of thought they had lost, but they didn't. So please forgive us for leaving. The next day, we read that they won, and we were just so crushed. I just want to thank them for inviting us, and we do need to look at some of the facilities at Woodbridge High School. And now, that's something that was not on my agenda tonight, Ms. Allison Satterwhite. First, it wasn't just me, the board chair and I invited them during the agenda planning. I have been on this board for five years. Ever since I have been on this board, I've talked about closing the gap, a voice for the voiceless. The people who are in the gap are not people who are going to come to this boardroom. As a board, we are responsible for student learning. It was not a professional development presentation. It was a presentation on the meta-analysis of what works and providing that information to principals. And to say, yes, this school board does have a goal. And there's been a lot of things that have happened on this board that have not, where we've not been cohesive. But I think the one spot of cohesiveness happens to be with closing the gap. There are some of us in schools, the Title I schools, are making some progress, but they need to make more progress. Too many of them are below the state guideline for reading. I would ask members of the board to look at those schools and tell me that as a board, we are not responsible for letting principals know that we do hold them responsible. Perhaps there was a lot happening that night, and perhaps it could have been presented in a more positive vein. The fact, I do not apologize for principals having to stay here until 11:00 because we stay at football games until 11:00. I've stayed at programs until 11:00. To ask principals to be in a room for one night to hear that one of the goals of this school board is to close the achievement gap for mostly poor children. Our biggest achievement gap is not African-Americans, it's with economically disadvantaged kids. Those are not parents that are going to come to us and say, "Our children are not learning at that level." I do apologize if somehow it was misinterpreted. I think tongue-lashing is a very strong word, and I'm personally offended that a board member would say that to me because Dr. Walts and everyone on this board has known me for a long time, and they know my passion. My life has been devoted to kids who are not supposed to learn, and I've seen them do it at a high level. And once you see that, you're never the same. And to the associates, I expect you, as a board member, not as your direct boss, because I'm not. And Dr. Walts knows that he knows me. And he knows that when I feel passionate about something, for five years, I have asked, I've looked at the scores, we're flat on closing the gap. We're not making a lot of progress. We do need to do something different. That does not mean that principals have not done a good job. And I told them, I've been one. I have worked six and a half days a week for over 20 years, and I have stayed until 11:00, 12:00, and come back on Sunday. So to all the principals, I support you. I wanted you to hear it from me, that I expect us to close the achievement gap. Whatever we're doing right now, we need to change what we're doing. And for me, it was about at least know what the national best practices are. If you had cancer, you would want to know what are the best practices. And I shared that with them, and I don't apologize. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jessie. I'm going to talk about a few different things here, and I'll try to be very brief. I don't think it should take very long. Just based on a few conversations I had with some teachers, I'd say eight to 12, depending on how many I can remember and how many I should duplicate in my head. An interesting thought, Dr. Walts, and I'm not going to ask you for an answer now. It was just an interesting conversation that maybe you or your staff can look into. But some teachers brought up to me the idea of Election Day next year and how basically having a conference day makes them work, makes it very, very difficult from the vote because of the conference is running over and difficult. And it was an interest, and so they said if we ever did it again, their interest would be to flip those two days and make the conference day on Monday and the professional development day on Election Day. Again, I haven't done any research in this, and I'm not speaking to the viability of it. I'm just speaking to the conversations that I had that I thought were interesting, and I thought I would bring it up. I could have emailed to you, but it honestly just popped in my head while I was sitting here. So there, you have it. There it is. I thought that was an interesting conversation worth doing. You know, obviously, this county, we had a speaker come up from Woodbridge earlier and talk about, you know, the real and/or perceived discrepancy, you know, in the different schools that we have. It's certainly no one's fault on this board that certain buildings are older than others. We can't be held to account for that. But I do think the concerns are real, and obviously, as I've said before, you know, representing in a certain way, no matter where school development goes, no matter where school improvement goes, I don't have a dog in that fight necessarily because I represent everybody in the county. And so ultimately, when we add class sizes and we fix a gym, when we do these things, it's not a political thing for me, but I do think it's important. Perception sometimes is reality, especially for those doing the perceiving. And I think it would be interesting for this board to, and I say this only again for food for thought, I do think it would be interesting for this board and even the staff at times to think about anything that we may be able to do within the budget, outside of the budget, to think of some of these older schools. And we can't fix everything at once, please. That's not what I'm trying to say at all. But it's worth it. And I think, obviously, the magisterial members, especially where some of those older schools exist, you know, might be able to kind of call some of that information. Because I have heard quite a bit about that, not just through email, but through traveling the county, through going to sporting events, through going to these different events. Going to, we've been able to open some new schools on the eastern end this year and having people pull me aside going, "We just never thought it would happen over here in years." And so it's a conversation that's happening. It's coming to me, I'm not going to it, I'm not trying to find it. And it's a conversation that's happening, and I think it's important that we continue to look at that. I have no doubt that we are. We've had infrastructure conversations. We've had infrastructure conversations over and over again. Someone passed me a note saying that we have the Infrastructure Task Force, which, which is, which is a nice step in the right direction, but I'm just mentioning the things that I'm hearing, because I'm not on that task force, and, and I think it is that, that, and, and you know, the, the woman that came today and other people might be able to come to this meeting, but they can't make it to an Infrastructure Task Force meeting, and they can't get to every single event where every conversation happens. So it, it's interesting to have that conversation. Again, one last food for thought item is, I've mentioned this, I think on social media a few times, I think I've mentioned it in an interview or two, I don't want to say "in passing," but I think it's something this board, again, should, should let soak in their brains for a little bit, going into budget season, which I enjoy almost as much as Mr. Trenum, I'm getting there, I, I do, it's my, it's my, it's my favorite part of the year as well, obviously outside of Chicken Wing Day for me, because I do, I do enjoy some chicken wings, but other than that, it's, I think one thing that this board should look at, we weren't able to make a dent in it, and the superintendent and his staff put a lot of work into that supplemental budget last year. At the direction of the board, by the way, at, at our direction, they put a lot of, they put a lot of time and effort into that supplemental budget. I think it was when somebody asked for the minutes from a board meeting from back in the 60s or 70s, when, when we were talking about the Stonewall Jackson stuff, I think in those minutes, something they got lost in those minutes, was that they were still, they were talking about trailers. I don't know if anybody read through those minutes or not, but they were talking about trailers in those, I read through the whole thing, right? And so we're talking about going back to the 60s, 70s, where the board members were talking, every board member, I think, has a school named after them now, so that's why I recognized all the names. But, but they, by the way, they named them after themselves back then, so we get controversial now, come on. You know, I haven't proposed Sawyer's Elementary School yet, so I'm one step up on that, Mr. Trenum, you know, we're, we're doing all right. But joking aside, I think one thing this board should think about is, is passing a resolution, asking the Board of County Supervisors to pass a bond to fund the school, the supplemental budget. This conversation has been going on for years and years and years, and a vote of the people, we talk about funding the schools all the time, building the schools faster, expediting the C I P, this takes, this takes the, the, the 16 elected board members out of it, this allows the people to say, "We either want, we either want to pay for a bond or we don't, and at least for the rest of this term," in my opinion, would stop the conversation. We can say, "Do we want this bond to build these schools faster, or don't we? Do we want to build schools faster or not? It's not about Facebook posts, it's not about articles, it's not about interviews anymore. We can take the vote directly to the people, which only the Board of County Supervisors can do, we can only ask them to do it, right? But we take it directly to the people and say, "Do we want to fund the supplemental budget above and beyond what we do with the regular school board budget? We obviously still have to run the schools, this is a different bond issue on top of what we already have, so we can build our schools faster." I think it's time to ask the residents of Prince William County, take the controversy, take anything you may feel about Chairman Stewart or Chairman Sawyer's, take all that out of, of the discussion and put up for a vote whether the people of Prince William County want to build these schools faster or not with a bond issue. Leave it up to them, and that will solve the conversation, one way or another. I know which way I'm going to vote, right? But one way or another, the people of Prince William County can chime in, we can take this directly to the people and try to solve problems that we've been dealing with for 50 years, at least, at least on this board and the Board of County Supervisors' term. I think it's something this board should consider, I'm not putting up a motion tomorrow, nobody panic, or, or next week, it is food for thought, but I think it's time that we take this head-on, and we can't wait till the middle of budget season to bring something like this up. I think it's something that people should start discussing now, the, the yin and the yang, and the ups and the downs, and the pros and the cons, and we can start to have that conversation and feel like if we're actually really serious about, about reducing the infrastructure problem that we have in Prince William County today. So with that, and no further business before this board, this meeting is adjourned.